Okay, well, I think we'll start our pre-session tonight. Let's do a roll call really fast. We're not recording. Yeah, we are recording. Live streaming, I guess. Oh, we are. So, welcome. This is June, what is today?
Ten.
I thought all day it was Monday, I'm confused. June 10th, pre-session. I'm Mayor.
Councilwoman Chris.
Councilmember Ms. McCoy.
Councilmember Javale.
Councilmember Popkin.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Eugene May, City Attorney.
Harold Dominguez, City Manager.
Mayor Pro-Tam Susie Delaparing.
Zach Arden, Public Safety Chief.
Elizabeth Reber, Assistant City Clerk.
Riley Lottis, Public Information Officer.
Thank you. We don't have anything on the agenda tonight, but we do need to go around and talk about boards and commissions. And what I think might be nice is to think about what is the role of the appointees to the board? What are the roles of that board? And I don't think we've ever really talked about that. We're having a little conversations going on that might not be appropriate from some of the board members. So, I think that they ought to, and actually, I'll just start off. For me, the board members are supposed to advise council based upon what our project is, what the staff brings to us, what we direct the staff to look into. That is where their relationship, I guess, with council and the residents is to answer some of those questions as best they can and then advise council, especially if it's a huge project or ordinance, on what action they think they should take, knowing that council does not have to follow that advice. So, if anyone has a different opinion, please pop in here.
Well, it really depends on the board. There are some boards that are just basically stewards for the city in regards to their role. I think of often like the Callahan House or something like that, where they're making sure that the place doesn't fall down around their ears and that sort of thing. And they have certain things like, you know, that you wouldn't think of, like stoves, replacements, and how practical it is for people that are coming in to do the catering for a wedding or some sort of thing like that, that we have to, that they take into account. They have multiple clubs and organizations inside that, so that is a little bit different. So, it depends on some of them. Most of them, I would agree that are, should take our, when we assign something to them to look at, they should give their, stay in that lane. But some others like that are a little bit different. And I kind of think sometimes the golf boards in that same sort of boat a little bit too. They're really, they're in the first line of defense when it comes to, did we have a, had something happen at the golf course, you know, like sprinkler system just absolutely failing or some sort of thing like that? We have to, it's not something we should be directing them on. It's something that they should be like, hey, guess what? We have this serious issue of failing a piece of infrastructure at the golf course that needs to be addressed. So, it's almost like they're coming to us for, to get us up to speed on things.
So, I'll piggyback off of that, because I don't disagree with anything, Mayor, that you said. And I'll just add, I think there's like, there's two kind of schools of thought here. Like, there's, or two situations at the fore. Some boards have like very clear plans, zoning, housing, and services. Like, they have specific tasks that they do, independent of whether council has given direction or not, right? And we don't want to discourage the boards from bringing, like the golf course advisory board, from bringing issues proactively to us when they actually are salient and present. I think then you also have this dynamic where if we haven't given a board direction on certain things, they might feel like they're grasping at straws for a bit. And I see that with both the airport board sometimes and sustainability advisory board sometimes, where, yes, they might get a presentation from staff on a certain issue, but there's a vac, sometimes there's a vacuum to fill from a discussion standpoint. And in that vacuum, certain members, rightfully or wrongfully, might choose to proactively offer something that they should recommend. Now, the productive, golf course advisory board, the senior systems advisory board recently brought that food security topic forward. They kind, I don't think, I wasn't on council when, like, a year ago, but I don't think council assigned them to look into food security, right?
Right.
They voluntarily said, hey, we think this might be a priority, let's do our homework, let's come to council. And I don't think anyone here would say that was unproductive effort. So, at the same time, we don't want to discourage that from emanating organically, but we also want to maybe offer more direction to certain boards where we think otherwise that vacuum would be filled up productively. So, that's kind of that tension that I'm hearing from different types of advisory boards and how they handle situations. And I don't think that's just a function of people. I think this board structure is.
Okay. Any other input?
Well, I think, I think people should feel free to state their opinion and free to voice an alternate point of view. If you don't have, you know, you can say, oh, thank you, I didn't know that, and happy to hear that, or, you know, nice to know that information, it doesn't mean we have to act on it. But sometimes, if not all of its pieces of it are useful, then nice to know about. For instance, knowing more about the faulty goals was helpful to me in this last discussion that we had last week. And I guess it was less. And I don't think I would have found that any other way.
Was it the board or community?
I think it was, I think they, that's what the information came.
Community, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the community, so this is different conversation in that the board's responsibility is specifically the actions of, for example, council makes policy, operations does the work based upon the policy. But the employees of the city are not the council's employees. They are Harold's employees or Eugene's employees. So, when we give direction, we give direction to Harold, not to any of his employees. And it's not really appropriate for us to go without Harold knowing or giving, giving his blessing, really, to go to a certain director of a department or, and tell them what to do, or, because they're not our employees. And that's where I've heard some scuttlebutt that some, well, one person in particular, but I would like to address to all the boards, has been doing that, you know, rather than making a board decision.
Talking to staff?
Or to a board member? Yeah.
The board, the board members have been talking to staff?
Well, not everyone. I want.
Occasionally.
And I want to know if you agree with that. Do you think that they should follow the same rules as far as talking to staff that council has to follow? Because they should be giving advice as a board, not as an individual.
Oh, I agree with that. I wasn't disagreeing with any of what you had said. I do want to say that I found out about the faulty goals because somebody sent me the Dana Bowe's report, which I would not have seen any, any other way, I don't think. And then people in the community came and spoke, but that would have been new information to me if I hadn't seen that report. And then I think the boards report to council, not to staff.
Correct.
So, it's good that they should come and tell us stuff and we should take it, you know?
And that's what we want. We want to see them as a conduit between what they discuss and bringing it to us.
Right.
Mayor.
It's on the great.
So, Eugene, now, a few occasions have had to go have conversations with boards because they slide into the operational world and start directing staff. And so, I think like three or four times, maybe, we've had to go in boards and say, look, you're advising the council on the policy positions and operational issues.
Right.
You know, that's here. And typically, when we have to do that is, they get directive on things that aren't potentially in alignment with the council's policy objectives, which is a lot of times where we're sliding in because you want to establish this policy directive. And then it starts going sideways. Where they're in operations, they're in policy, it may not align with council's policy, or trying to move somewhere operationally that is not in alignment with the policy or capacity to deal with, and we're having to then helicopter in and have a conversation.
So, now, let's just, go ahead.
Is that right? So, I think that's, that's kind of what I'm picturing. You know, we have our goals and objectives, we have our priorities, it's graphic, and it's really important that we have board members who know and understand what our priorities are. And their responsibility on these boards is to align with that. I mean, they can, of course, they can have a different opinion and ask questions. But I think at the end of the day, that board needs to come together and decide, okay, is this action that we're going to move on in alignment with city council's priorities and objectives? I think, you know, when, when I kind of, you know, I think about, I have the library, museum, I mean, they're pretty, they're not planning and zoning, or, you know, some of the big, the bigger topics, I know we're going to be moving in sustainability and parks and rec for some, for some issues. You know, one of the things I always encourage when I talk to them, you know, if your issue is budget, come to council. Say, you know, come to the public comment and take that lead. I think it's, you know, one of the things that had me very concerned early on when I got on the library advisory board was, you know, are they trying to go a different direction that is away from our city priorities? And I think this group that we have now are just, they're really focused on that and adhering to that and looking ways to support the library that aligns with our mission, that is within the capacity of what we can do with staff. So, yes.
I have a question. The other part of this, staff is hopefully cognizant that they should inherently disregard inappropriate direction, right? So, there's like, not anything actually happening, is, there's inappropriate direction.
Yeah, and most of them are pretty good. Where we have challenges sometimes are, like, one time we had it with the sustainability advisory board a while back. I mean, it's kind of creeping up again. But there's a point where we have staff liaisons that are really adept at doing that, and there are times when they're not. And so, we, like on that with Lisa, we have Becky there with her now to kind of help with that. Even then, there's some times where it gets a little contentious. I think we've got to do this twice with the airport board. We did it once at the library board when they were really looking at the library district. Yeah, we did it once at Callahan House. And typically, when they bring us in is when it starts getting a little pushy. And that's when they'll reach out to their supervisors and that then lands on the two of us. Both of us or one of us will come in and have that conversation. They don't do anything with it, it just creates a bit of an interesting dynamic.
So, okay.
Here's what, so putting like two or three examples just to make this tangible and tangible. So, Phil adeptly handled the questions on the transportation mobility plan when it was presented to SAB. But someone, one of the board members took care of the direction and asking about like privacy concerns from cameras, which is just not what the board's purview. So, that happened to be the first impression I made when joining that advisory board and saying this is how it's going. Phil obviously handled it well, but he's putting staff in a comfortable position sometimes where they're trying to like, not tell, remember like, you're out of line, but they are. And so, I like, I heard loud and clear from our first meeting that that was our role to kind of jump in. The second situation, and this was a situation where a board member on SAB brought in an issue from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board into that meeting, hadn't been directed to SAB yet. So, I'm wondering if those are issues where we know there might be direction to advisory board, where council liaisons can say like, let's, let's hold on this. Council may choose to direct this board to look into that. Is that an appropriate way to handle that? And then I'll ask the third question, just to kind of put it out there. So, the situations, most recently, on the airport board, there was a discussion about landing fees before we had had a discussion publicly on that, on that. And that's where the letter came from the chairwoman of AAB. I wasn't at that meeting in person, but the board basically had a brief discussion, decided to advise us on landing fees. And I had already told the board that they should be expecting us to send them direction on, to like, to ask for guidance on that. But we hadn't directed them, and I directed how yet. So, was that overstepping? Was that, again, again, have they, just how do we think about those types of situations?
I think that's very similar to the Parks and Recreation Board. They're, they go to, they're looking at different parks because we're looking at different ways of doing parks. So, they were looking at, going to do a field trip and look at the park up in Bertha, just so that they had an understanding of what that looked like. We want them to have an insight to something like that so that then it can be a productive conversation. And having a field trip to something like that ahead of time without staff, council direction is probably being proactive, considering that's kind of a trend that's happening in parks and recreation about that type of thing. Oh, we should know what it is. Maybe even have some background about the liability of something like the one that we see as you drive up 2A7 to Bertha and that sort of thing. I don't, I don't have so much of an issue with something like that as them, because at least I feel like they are then going to be able to look at this, walk around this thing, see it, feel it, and look at, and ask some questions of people there. And then when it gets to, when we start thinking, hey, the public says, hey, we'd like a park like that, they're like, well, you know. And that sort of thing. And I would prefer them to be at least a little proactive.
And for my, this is why when we were doing, had a break in the, the board and commission interviews, I asked what, what is the role? Because we should be telling the appointees what their role is and is not, because I don't think that they understand that. But if we, as a council, don't understand it, then we can't tell them what their role is. But I also do not want staff having to deal with board members. So, we, as a council, have the ability to take them off of the board if we have complaints or whatever. So, that was one of the reasons of having that complaint portal. If they become too obnoxious with staff or whatever, go out to the complaint portal and make a complaint about them, rather than continually, because I think having to go, this is just my thought, if you don't, you know, chime in if you don't think that's a good idea. Because having to go to a, what do we call it, officer?
Hearing officer.
A hearing officer and have that complaint read and then have them respond would make a difference. That's just my thought. So, that if the council tells them, the board that you're the liaison to, what the rules are to remind them, and they, they don't keep following it, then should they be on the board? And that's, that is council's decision from rules of procedure, if I understand correctly.
Yeah. I think most of the ordinances establishing boards are not set up on a council referral type system. They define the powers and duties of the board, and the board needs to operate within those parameters. There was a time when the environmental advisory board started doing things that were sort of outside their jurisdiction, and council amended the ordinance to say, if you do things beyond the ones that are listed above, council needs to refer them. So, you know, on Matthew's example, with the landing fees, the power and duties of the airport advisory board is to review and recommend the city council actions concerning lease rates, fees, and handling budgets. So, from my perspective, it was within their.
It was appropriate.
Authority to do that. And if that's a source of tension, you know, we can figure out ways to address that. You can have a board commission, I don't know, rules of procedure, we could change ordinances, you know, whatever the council thinks is the right relationship. We could have a council and talk to the board chairs about what the expectation of council is, because they are per charter advisory dependent. So, it's how it is, council want to use them to advise you on.
So, on that, on that example, it's an interesting one, because obviously, landing fees are not outside the purview of the airport advisory board. I think my concern stemmed from a little bit of just being premature in conversation. And so, we're getting advice from the board before we had referred the issue, knowing that this issue was coming there, and then in theory, we're going to be extending some of what we just discussed last week to them. But now, they've already taken an advisory position on it, didn't have more information. I mean, that was the letter, it was, this is how we feel about this topic. And, but they haven't had a presentation from staff, there wasn't discussion, it's not the information that council thought would inform a robust discussion on that. And so, like, is that just putting the cart before the horse in a way that's unproductive to actually give us credible advice? And so, you know, maybe that's a perception for them to manage and their choice ultimately at the end of the day. But I think, you know, if we want to have the strongest relationships with the boards and make sure that we're getting the best possible input that is, you know, perceived to be effective and helpful. That was where I was coming from on that, of just not overstepping their scope, just understanding their role better of like, what's.
And they, where they, we did think they were overstepping their scope oftentimes at airport board. There was a period of time when the airport board was weighing in on landing sabotage and that was a concern. We talked to them, they listened for a little while, then went back to their old ways, and the next talking to got a little sterner, I think Harold came in and I think attorney, I think his attorney went in and let them know what their jurisdiction is.
Because it would be like directives to, let's say, the airport manager to, you need to post this, when his responsibility is very specific from a technical perspective, where we would have to do that. And then to Eugene's point, and we have, and I've seen this in every city, hey, this is not an unusual conversation right now. The city managers group actually reached out to go, what is everybody doing with their boards? Because I want to say Erie, maybe Lafayette, they went, there was a wholesale change. I think there were some communities where they were diverging. So, it's not new. I think we've all seen boards that will inherently tread into another board's area of focus. And then we end up with boards fussing at each other, because this is our purview, it's not your purview. I think one that we saw may have been between AIPP and the library board. You may have been on it when there was some like artwork or something, and, or maybe for you, but I think the mayor, I mean, so we, we see it occasionally, and we have to kind of parse it.
Well, I, I think, my perspective from the whole situation, I think I've been blessed to be on boards where the chairs are the leaders and they know how to facilitate a board meeting, you know? And so, I think that is the key. I think the responsibility actually lies on the chair and vice chair of those boards to, right, to pull it in and say, hey, that's, we haven't direct, we haven't sent any information to council yet, because we're waiting to hear back from staff on these issues and things like that. I really truly believe that these conversations need to be had with the chair and vice chairs of the boards who are serving, to let them know what the board's responsibilities and duties and obligations are.
Okay, sounds good. And we've already gone through the interview processes, so this is basically going forward and just have a discussion about it, so.
Do you want us as the ASOs to have that discussion?
It depends upon, if your boards are fine.
Yeah.
Then there's no point. But I suppose if they get.
Eventually, I really do think that.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think you're right. Oh, my God. Yes.
Well, I think eventually, I think that all chair, board chairs and vice chairs, we should do like a virtual meeting or something like that and have Eugene, and let's talk about it, because, so that everybody can be on the same page.
Okay. I think if we all go back to our boards, there's going to be seven different interpretations.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
We unroll our scroll.
Yeah.
Yes.
I do want to note, I was very skeptical when Councilmember McCoy suggested we refer like the gas station issue to SAB. I will say, what I've learned from that is that it's actually fostered a unproductive discussion there. And that, you know, I guess I'd love to know from Harold, like, how many referrals are too much? Like, how much extra work is that adding to staff's plate? Because I don't want to just direct things, I'm sick of directing them too forward, but there are probably enough, we do have enough topics that multiple boards could probably be, be pulled into some of those conversations if we thought that was productive. So, I just don't know on the operations side, how much extra work that is.
It really depends on the why. So, if you think about the staff that's connected to, well, there's just a few pieces to that one. It depends on the operating department. So, let's just use like PM, you know, the planning staff right now. As we're thinking about the planning staff with just the normal workload on applications that are coming in, and then you look at some of the special projects, we make a first domain and some of those areas, that group could be, I mean, they're on a cusp right now. And so, if you take that group and you ask that, then that would become an operational challenge for us. If you think about it in terms of the sustainability group, it's a different evaluation from a workload perspective, because they just don't have the same volume that exists. And so, it is situational dependent. I think the other thing that council needs to consider is what pace do you want to move on an issue? Because if you want to move with pace on, again, just because it's front center, like first domain, kind of that urban renewal area, that's inherently going to slow it down. And so, those are a couple of things you need to look at. So, it's kind of hard to just give you a, is it a lot of work? If there's a big, it depends, and it depends what departments are engaged in that conversation. Then, how quickly do you want it done? Because you have the ability to either direct it to the board and question it or more boards, but it's just going to elongate your timeframe.
I also had a thought listening here, if this relationship or direction is a concern for council, Dawn and I do board and commission orientation training, and we do chair and vice chair training, and we can certainly incorporate it into that, because we don't talk about that under our current, it's more not symbols.
That sounds productive.
I think that would be a very good idea. Yeah.
Yes.
Well, and that's one where we need council direction, because that's not in our purview. So, we have the operational conversation. If that's something you want us to do from a council perspective, we can have that conversation. But that's really you all saying you want either.
Yeah.
We want that direction. And we want you to do that.
Is that a burden to you?
No. You're already having those trainings.
We're having a training there, hour and a half, twice a year. And then we get chairs, vice chairs, I think, once a year, so.
It's better to do that than have all of the drama come later on.
I know, yeah.
To be honest, you know?
That's an ounce of prevention.
Yeah, right.
Well, and then the other thing is to then, to file a complaint, would that be fair, especially if they didn't know where their role was and they weren't understanding that they crossed the line? You know, I think it's, I think to have those guardrails already set up and codified.
Well, some people get on these boards because they kind of see themselves as activists, and then they don't realize that our boards are not positioned for an activist situation. Maybe it's, it's hard for somebody who feels themselves to be an activist on a particular issue to all of a sudden realize that that's not the role of. And so, that's. And so that's, and I think that's a, a hard one for people to just kind of unreal themselves from.
I think that's also hard, like, the trainings make sense and then unless I get other directions, it sounds like the prevailing guidance from this group here is if, if a board member seems to be overstepping, our job as liaisons is to pull that in either live or after the fact. Right, just to avoid like going down particular avenues or crossing the line in operations issues.
And, you know, Eugene and Dawn can do it at the training and then if you wanted to have the conversation with the chair and vice chair, we could attach with the council liaisons and the chairs and the vice chairs. When I say we, it would probably be someone, Eugene's group. And maybe Dawn or maybe liaison and the assistant city manager that oversees that area to kind of have everyone on the same page. And you could, you could do that too, if that's what you wanted. I mean, there's some horror stories, at least I've, we've seen, I've seen planning commissions sue councils and some councils sue planning commissions.
I should save that for Halloween.
Yeah, there is some interesting pieces in this.
And I think the board members can be receptive, you know, if they're on this board because they're passionate about these things.
Yeah.
But oftentimes they don't understand the bigger picture, council board relationship and how the city works and staff's role and that kind of stuff and, and we may not do a great job of explaining that.
Well, and, and to be fair, we have our own issues with staff too. You know, one that hit, you all were in the meeting, this meeting when Suzie was saying when they were bringing the days of dead.
Oh, yes.
And, and so as staff, we can bring things operationally to boards before we bring it to you all. So things like going to visit park, you know, we're probably as staff doing that. You know, there was an issue where it was actually my issue with staff. Because they were bringing things that I wasn't, I don't know how to say it. I did not think was in alignment with council's policy. And making operational changes and running it in front of the board before they ever talked to me operationally. And, and that's a different issue that I have to deal with and that I did deal with to say this, this doesn't happen on bringing operational issues that doesn't go, Zach actually is the one that gave me the heads up on, on that issue. And it's like, no, you, you don't start heading down this road operationally. And part of it is the same issue that you're all talking about that I have with staff is, you know, I use the analogy, we're up here at forty, fifty thousand feet and pretty much everyone in this room, we're playing three dimensional chess where we're managing multiple variables, multiple outcomes, really taking a systems thinking approach, but as you start getting deeper, people begin very, start becoming really myopic on singular issues. And we're, you know, and I'm having to work with staff to bridge that, which is, on the fiscal toll piece, why I was the one that actually did the presentation, talking about, you have environmental issues over here, you have cost issues over here, you have, I mean, and so I was connecting dots beyond just this to kind of give people a sense of you're all managing multiple variables when you're considering these things. And so I have to deal with staff on that, so I have my own issues there at times.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up because I see it as a potential mess.
It's a good topic.
Yeah, so let's go around how fast and reports and reports, if you have any.
Okay, I'll start.
Yes, please, I'm staring at you, so.
Housing and Human Services, so two months ago, because last month we didn't have this meeting, a pre-session meeting, so two months ago, they had a refresher course on their scoring for the grant applications and, you know, the complexity and also the tweaks that continually be made. And then the big, the big thing that happened this last month was they heard a presentation on requests for our forum of housing and CDVG funding. And there were, I believe, five organizations, including Habitat, Brothers Painting, some, I can't remember off the top of my head because they provide programmatic services. And so that, those recommendations obviously come up to us, at the end of the day. Planning and zoning, last month they were off, the, the month before, actually, interesting enough, they wrote a fine line because they had requested a presentation on single family attached housing in single family detached zoning districts. It was informational only, there was no direction given by any standard, but it was an interesting presentation. Like I said, that was kind of riding the fine line of the conversation we just had. And it's in line with what they've been doing of having educational presentations when they're not getting enough applications or things coming across their desks, planning and zoning, and their meeting is also canceled this month. The Housing and Human Services next meeting is Thursday. So.
That should be very interesting as well.
CNL has obviously slowed down because legislative session is over, but apparently there's a conference coming up in two weeks.
Yes, yeah.
Senior System Advisory Board, you guys all heard the presentation on food security. They appreciated that council all agreed, we had a meeting last week, they appreciated that council all agreed to kind of bring this up as a formal conversation. Multiple discussions about just the need for more staff, the expansion of the senior center and technology upgrades kind of in that rank of priority. So just putting it out there for the boardists. Talked about in Andy Fies' letter already for the airport advisory board, they're now going to deal with two motions that we'd sent to the airport board a couple of weeks ago on communication regarding public safety threats to aviation and communication regarding the vol, efficacy of communication regarding the voluntary noise statement. And then Sustainability Advisory Board, actually the question that they wanted me to ask this group briefly, which is just on a process from updating interview questions, having just gone through the board interview process, is there any reason why the, like, or I guess asking out of ignorance here, like, what's the process for a board determining what questions to ask during an interview? Do they get to decide that? For the show members?
That's their purview?
They want to update that? Do we have to sign off on that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And related to the conversations we just had, a couple, let's say, straight topics that have come up that were not given. I think that's awesome.
All right. I have a few things. LDVA was, didn't meet the last meeting this month, this month, last month, last month. And I went to NADA, I just want to say that there was a memorandum of, under MOU's, signed, we all agreed upon in NADA, that, let me see. It's a collaboration of advocacy for the North Act 25 unfinished segments. And so they wanted NADA to sign on that, so that they can get this, this work done. Of course, it's like Fort Collins area, through the area, you know, but it doesn't matter, it affects, you know, Act 25 in general. So we all approved the MOU, including you all, because I was the director of the center up there. And also what's new is on the 25th, they're having a Smart E-Hub, Smart Commute. And they are doing a grand opening of the Smart E-Hub. And its Smart Commute launches its newest e-bike program. And it will be Northland, of course, we all will be up in Breckham Ridge, but it's going to be at Northland Rec Center and Denver Premium Outlets. That's where they're gonna have this grand opening. Stop by one of their bike to work stations on the 25th, which is the two I talked about to check out, the latest tech-enabled racks and lockers in action and learn more about their Smart Commute, their program, their E-Hubs, okay? I did not go to transportation last night, although I wanted to, my dog, he had, she had to have mouth surgery and so she was, they suggested I stay at home and so she was very loopy, so it was really good that I did. She was standing there swaying side to side, trying to look at me, it was hilarious, I video this. Anyway, so, um, record it. I did ask that I get an update because the agenda doesn't go in through, go into details. So the highlights last night at TAB meeting, Transportation Advisory Board meeting, there was announcement and implementation of a new staff structure as liaisons to the board. So Phil and Jim will be stepping aside from leading and turning, and they're turning it over to Kaylee and Ky, Kyle. Update on Bike to Work Day, much larger event than in the past with more of a festival field tents and vendors and giveaways. Alex Donaldson from Public Works Engineering gave an update on the Colorado 119 Hoover project. Now, due to cost issues, there's no longer a bike pedestrian grade separation proposed for this intersection, and that's Hoover and 119. City staff is working with CDOT to create better.
Say that one more time.
Due to cost issues, there's no longer a bike slash pedestrian grade separation proposed to that intersection of Hoover and 119, okay? City staff is working with CDOT to create better at-grade crossings for the bicycles and pedestrians. One of the crossings south of the intersection will include a mid-block crossing associated with the existing underpass by Oscar Blues. Another item will be some minor reconstruction of the intersection of Hoover and Clover Basin Drive to create a more direct. Wait a minute. How am I going to remind that? Oh, to create a more direct and visible crossing. So while none of these improvements are ideal for the city, there are many constraints leading to these decisions. A more thorough memo to the city council will be coming soon from TAB. TAB had concerns that the TMP policies are not being thoroughly considered by CDOT at this time. So Kami and Dylan updated the board last night on the progress to date on the Vision Zero work. There are, they are on the cusp of starting the action plan process and can get to, get the work done without federal dollars if necessary. Wow.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, there are many ways to participate still for folks who are interested. So if you all know anyone who wants to participate, then Vision Zero will be on the task board and it will remain throughout the process. So lots of great outreach and input chances are available for this project. We are looking forward to some very good public-facing dashboards for people to view and better understand safety in Longmont streets. This is, there is some concern that the next TAB meeting in July will conflict with a lot of people's stuff, so I don't know, we may not be, we may not have a meeting. So that was the update. And that, like I said, if you have a meeting, I didn't go to Sister Cities.
All right. Gulf was canceled, LPM, I did miss that, they had it on, they moved it, they move it around sometimes, which makes it a little bit frustrating. And it was moved to Tuesday, the 27th, the one of May, and it's like the one time you have off. And so I made plans and it was just one of those conflicts. Prab is having, let me see here, I have. They're, they did something kind of interesting. They talked about how they have recreation emergency plans, so like at the rec center, at the pools and stuff like that, if there's ever any sort of a serious issue of how they will deal with it. And so that's kind of a cool kind of thing to know that they, we see this in schools all the time, but we, I hadn't thought of it from the point of view of the pool needing to be evacuated because some, some situation there or the rec center. So they've gone through training and things like that, which is, I think, very positive. Then, then they also talked a little bit about their fourth July event and I know I'm going to get this wrong, it's either 12 beer and liquor licenses that are set up there and 18, was it food trucks or vice versa? But I think it's, it's the other, so I have to check on that again. And so that's kind of interesting too, because it's expanded and the only thing that I think is really missing is somehow, somehow a way of parking back here further out and getting some sort of regular sort of bus in like we had done with the Rhythm on the River in the past, which is probably something in the future we'll have to look at and everything. And then I talked a little bit about the field trips. They always do a field trip in the summer. And so last year was all the different, and some of you may have gone on that too, to go look at the different open space areas. This one, we're just trying to figure out which, where should we look at? We've opened a couple of parks, as some of you know. So that's, they're thinking, well, they have a smaller version of a new park they opened that has a few raised areas, kind of like these, like you see in Bertha, except it's really for little kids. What they want to do is make sure that they are ahead of the curve in knowing what needs to be done if, if council and the public starts pushing to go down the other way. So they want to do a field trip out to see that park where they have all the bike jumps and everything like that. So I think that's good. And so then the Consortium of Cities got, got moved to the 18th, otherwise I wasn't going to be able to make it, but it's moved to the 18th, so they're going to be talking a little bit about some of the issues that we have heard about in regards to grants and funding and issues around that. It's mainly just kind of how people are dealing with those situations as, as the, the federal situation's kind of been dynamic right now. And so then Sandy and I have been working together and getting a PowerPoint together just where we stand on some of those things. And so she's been extremely helpful. And then tomorrow, I try to go in the summer to Callahan when I can, just to find out a little bit and though, and make them feel like, you know, some member of council's kind of listening. Normally, that was years and years ago, it was always the, the wife of the mayor would go to Callahan. And so, so, so that's, it's changed, it's not in the case three ti, three different times, as we know. So, so I know that, that, you know, with that, they, they have little things that they are interested in, they want to have, they have the furniture in the main dining room and that's the hutches, the, the china hutches and the table and the chairs that need to be reverbedged. Now, this is not a cheap thing, it's about thirty thousand dollars to have all that stuff redone. But it's part of the process of you've got to make the place attractive for anybody who might be interested in having a wedding there. And so, you know, they've got the money, they just need to, they're trying to figure out how to, how to process through it. So they've got money received, there's groups like Equesters that had a garage sale this past weekend to help add to that and do some restoration on that, on those pieces. So we'll see, what, tomorrow?
Okay, visit Longmont. We've gone quarterly meetings, however, we started our marketing committee with little stakeholders, strategists and meet. We had a conversation about utilizing bike tours to get more overnight stays and also just newer groups in the city. And usefulness of sustainable tourism, which I guess is a thing, but the consensus was it really always comes down to price. The discussion led to wayfinding is very important, which Kimberly McKee has, has a whole plan, but it comes down to, you know, who's going to pay for it and if they don't have enough budgets, who'd like more money?
Did they consent to how much, don't they?
That's a good question.
Thank you.
I think I wrote against one, but I'm writing mine, I was a member of Kimberly, but yeah. Longmont Economic Development Partnership, the new president is Kelly Sage, she's like Longmont Economic Development Partnership, the new president is Kelly Sage, she's likable, she has good ideas. As Harold mentioned, we have a new prospect already that she's bringing to the city. She talked about replacing her third person who'd been taken down to half the time, so therefore looked for another job. And she would like to have herself and two others. And so that also requires more money. And we talked about, they have a big facility there, maybe renting more of the facility or more often for more revenue. Harold suggested sharing more, more staff support, so that it would reduce expenses. It's both good ideas and probably maybe a combination of the two would yield best results. So, just as a personal comment, I think, you know, you'd like to see production to support more funding. So, okay. The North I-25 Coalition will be meeting in person next month. CDOT's made a number of improvements and they've been on top of things, especially in terms of talking to the federal government about getting grants and, you know, how to tailor those grants. So they've been fairly positive actually about their prospects in that regard. The pension funds, since, especially since, I don't think you were there either, were you there?
I remember later.
We added energy investments, which I thought you would be interested in hearing.
I'm really interested.
We had, they presented two possibilities and decided to split between the two. One is more traditional and capital investment heavy, and the other is more socially motivated investments in energy. So, so horse race to each one, you know, how they do, and probably it'll cover the whole topic better that way. The water board is, we're a little low on water at the last weigh-in, but then we had a lot of rain. We just didn't have as, the snow melt wasn't as, it actually was kind of cool. And so I don't think we had as much melt, I mean, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion about what was causing it. We wasn't worried about it because we had approved the water conservation. So we're just following that. And then I am so glad that Councilor Yarborough made the Vision Zero, because I do not, I think the next one's in August, yes?
I think so.
And I got an interesting proposal about food security after they heard us talking about it, so I'd like to talk to Matthew about that more, about bringing that forward, and there's something else I'm forgetting, oh. How many of us are going to Breckinridge?
I think all of us.
Some of you are going.
You do?
Two of you. Last time we all left, I had to be mayor for like four days, so.
Well, we're not far, we're not far.
It's true, it's on state.
We can hold still and stay, we can come back.
Fly, race down the hill.
Yeah, I don't either. We don't appoint actives when we're in state.
Yeah.
All right.
And sometime, I think for us, four within three hours, we're like, drive back.
Yeah.
And I have business. How do you know?
Yes.
What is? Is anybody else going on the bike, bike tour then, at Breckinridge?
Anyone else want to get up around a 10 km with me?
About none. I did that one year.
I get up and do yoga, but I'll get on the bike tour.
I'll come in with my slit eye and my mother coffee in first aid.
It was kind of locked in, it was really nice. She has such oils and oil, it was good. All right, that's it for me.
Okay.
Okay, so it was, it's not much, we'll keep it brief. So we mostly, I know, most of what our boards, so it was library, museum, arts and public places. The council did not meet, and in those three other boards, bless you. We, it was most, the talk was mostly around the board appointments. And I think in arts and public places, if I recall correctly, they were kind of picking out different task force. Of course, you know, assigning people to new, to new spots, so we were working on that. And then picking their design for their van go van. So most, most of the conversation was around picking that design. Yeah, so not, not much, the library, they talked about this, we did get a presentation on the strategic priorities and objectives around program spaces, literacy collections and staffing, and, you know, what direction they want to go in each of those categories. Our cap needs quarterly, so we're gonna be meeting at the end of this month. And then all my other, you know, third weeks of library board, museum board, and arts and public places, we're all meeting next week, so. Probably busy next week.
When is the lockers still?
I can ask on Monday. Real fast, I've got a, a note from Ben Ortiz. It is a great pleasure to inform you that Longmont Parking Code Amendments has won a Metro Vision Award from the Denver Regional Council of Governments. Yay, we got an award again. In GLA, there, one question came up, it was always a Q and A. Why does Ride Longmont still have, what kind of plates are they?
Utah.
Utah.
Utah plate.
Yes, why don't they have Colorado plates? So I'll ask Kaylee and have her answer that for me.
I think it's because they purchased all of them from there.
That's what I said.
They all have been all of them to do it.
That's what I told them, but I said, I'll definitely check. So I am throwing all of my time into Front Range Passenger Rail, RTD, to get that railed here. July 14th, Karen, Ben Kerr and I are throwing a community conversation education about FRPR and RTD and explaining where the money is coming from, how it's gonna be built, and how are we gonna get our train here by 2029? So please come to that, we'll have more martinis available.
Which is saying you have margaritas.
Ooh, margaritas sound great.
Hear what you want to hear.
Oh, I guess so, yeah.
I did that, I put it right on the train. So. Yeah. Can you usually have, Karen can send it out to the whole? Yes, we don't have the flyers or anything, we just had our meetings last night. Even if it's just a calendar invite.
Yeah.
So we can get on that calendar ASAP, because July I'm gonna fill up, so. And that's a Monday, so, yes, thank you, we'll do that. That's about all I've got, then we've got the fourth draft today, I just got it from Chrissy, of the IGA, which is the Joint Service Plan to get RTD, FRPR, CTIO, CDOT and CLE, I think, to work together in a joint service plan just for the north. So I'm hoping RTD accepts that plan and we can move forward. So they have to accept it by the end of July. So we have a huge mailing list, we want people to email RTD and say, we really hope that you support the IGA, we can move forward and get this train by 2029. You can always protest. We're good at that.
If you bought the train, that's not my problem.
Somebody would lay on those trucks. Something else out there, you know?
Can I ask one process question about all of the, like, boards? Is there, is there any reason why some of the presentations can't be uploaded or sent out in advance? Like, we just had a Vision Zero presentation, for instance, on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and I think some members struggled to digest information in real time.
That's true.
And like, and it was a lot of information, and I felt like it could have been a more productive conversation in any case. And so it might be a situational basis, but is there any legal reason or public records, that reason why it couldn't be sent out?
We put that on the list for liaisons, so we can talk to them about it.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it.
Juneteenth is Saturday.
Oh, yes, that's Saturday. Can you send out a calendar invite?
Yes, I can, I'm sure, can you? I'm in a free concert with Hazel Miller at the museum on June 19th, Thursday, and I'm introducing her, so.
Can you do a couple of calendars?
Yes, yes.
Still lots of changes happening. They have another retirement that has been announced.
I know, I'm so sad.
I think he announced that. So we're in the process of doing that, but we're making some organizational shifts right now. So we have taken, taken park rangers, parking control, code enforcement, tax, help me remember all of these, animal control. The work of the housing authority, and I think I'm missing one, and we're putting all of that under Sarah. In-Campus Supervisors under Sarah Arnie. We've been testing it out as part of our center of excellence model, and it's really kind of streamlined how quickly we're able to deal with things, and it allows those groups that are somewhat like public safety to interface in public safety, so we're making that official. And then based on the changes we're seeing, I announced today that I am combining bringing parks and rock together so that we can manage operational pieces on that.
What does that mean, bringing parks?
So they've restored, we've been in different operating areas.
Oh, staff.
And so, yeah, so at one point, one was under utilities, public works, mental resources. The other one was in community services, and then we kind of slid them in under the same ACM. Now we're putting them under the same director to really get some alignment, because things are going with. And so.
I'm actually relieved to hear that, because when you said to make an announcement. I'm going to get all, I'm going to jump, I'm ready, and not coming back.
So we're, we're still refining it, but I wanted you all to know that, because you're likely to hear it in your board meetings, but we're.
Who's gonna be the director?
David Bell. And then Jeff's gonna have David reporting to him, museum, library, golf. To all the open space parks that you all did. And they'll report to ACM, we're in the hiring process now on that, so they, we have gone through, just to let you know, three interviews, if I'm in the process of narrowing it down to two or three. I will bring them in and we will pound them, probably like they've never been pounded in an interview process. The applicant pool was really, really good, of the folks who brought in for interviews. Four of them are currently serving as an assistant city manager and two of them are directors in large, much larger organizations. So they went through seven hours straight of interviews each time, so we didn't let them rest. I went through two days of interviews non-stop. What we've learned in that exact two, what we've learned is by the end of it, you see the true person versus just going and receiving an interview. So I will be moving through that, hopefully on a decision in a couple of weeks.
Really test this community stomach, council meeting.
That's what I was thinking, do you?
You know what, all of them, most of them have watched council meetings. And so that was a big piece, and they watched, a lot of them hung in, the one with Dislato at the airport.
Okay. Did you quiz them at the awards the next day?
No, they were bringing it up actually, I turned it to them, I don't, I want to see what they're gonna bring up. And five, a few of them said, we finally had to go to bed, because we knew we had a full day of interviews. So they actually did really well, it's probably one of the strongest applicant pool that I've ever seen.
So what did they think of that council meeting? Just, we need the feedback, I'll sell them.
You know, none of them got scared of anything. I think when you look at folks in those positions, we've seen a lot of different things. And, you know, I think uniformly what they like is that, I think we've heard it from almost everyone, they've watched more than one, they've read a lot, is that it's not extreme, and sort of they see you all working with each other, unlike what they've seen in other jurisdictions. There's a lot of turmoil just right now generally, and they all kind of talk about that, so.
Mayor, I've got an update on the Utah plates.
Oh, yes.
So Ms. Kaylee, Ms. Kaylee Down, our transportation planner, says the operator has planned, promised that in the process of switching those out. They are claiming the process is taking a bit longer than expected, so she's gonna follow.
All plates, I was talking to him, he said, what about these Utah plates? And I was like, oh, God, I'll.
We just started, I have it Ride Longmont in December, so it's not like.
And it's only operators, even more than us.
Yeah.
Is Ride Longmont gonna be allowed through since July 4th or how?
Yeah, Phil's working with them on that, to see what they do. I'm actually, Zach, will you remind me to get with Jeff to see if we can utilize some of our buses and those and the parking spots?
Really, if we wanted to eat the thing.
It is after 7:00, so we're not giving.
Can I have one more comment? I was just thinking about our board's permissions. Can you make sure that all chairs and all vice chairs do receive the training?
That's the direction we have to provide formally, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So let's just make that part of the motion that's your career.
Yeah, exactly.
So we just need to make motion.
We invite that.
I know, but I think if they don't have it.
Well, I think when we make the motion, we're gonna say that. Yeah.
Be there or be swayed.
Or make up, make it up.
Yeah.
Do you want to give us the direction to then give to then, so we can be sure that they're kind of.
Yeah. That's all.
So you go to a juror in this meeting?
Yep.
Because we're moving into the next one.